Good evening. I'll bring this regular city council meeting to order. Could please rise by the invocation by Deacon John Dunlop from Saint Sebastian Catholic Church?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let us now bow our heads and pray for God's blessing. Oh, God, our heavenly Father, we come before you with praise and thanksgiving, for you are a God of love. We ask you to send the Holy Spirit upon us in this great assembly of the city of Sebastian. Father God, thank you so much for passing this hurricane by us and all the worst effects. We will continue to serve you and to be caring and kind and loving as a community as this community is. And we ask you to bless all of these members and all of the people here present today. We ask this in the powerful name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Hill.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Mayor McPartland.
Here.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Coy.
Here.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Here.
Councilmember Hill.
Here.
Thank you.
Excellent. And then council agenda modifications. We have two items from the city manager. You want these on the regular consent or did everybody have the opportunity to?
Your call, sir.
Did everybody have the opportunity to read the two items that Mr. Griffin proposed? One about hurricane permits and then the other about the dangerous and unpermitted trees? Are you okay with them being on the consent agenda or?
No, I would like, I would like the dangerous and unpermitted trees on the agenda.
On the agenda, okay. So the trees would be item 14E.
Okay.
Are you okay with the other one going on consent agenda, everybody? Okay, so that'll be item 7F.
Yes.
Will be concerning the permits. Any other agenda modifications?
Sir.
Yes.
Scott Baker, our airport director, is going to be making a presentation. I'm requesting that goes in item 6, wherever you'd like to place that. Also, we may be extended in the new business section, 14 Delta, local state of emergency. Frank Watanabe, city engineer, will be making a report on debris removal.
Okay, so we'll make the airport managers item 6D1. How about that? Is that fine?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Keeping my score sheet here straight, okay. All right, that leads us into proclamations and awards. All right, Jack Willis. Twice in one day. There we go. How you doing?
Good.
Wayne, how are you?
All right, the first proclamation we have is for Veterans Day, which of course is November 11th. Whereas at 11:00 a.m. on November 11, 1918, after four years of bitter conflict, the world rejoiced and celebrated the signing of an armistice by the Allied forces and the Federal Republic of Germany for the cessation of World War I. And whereas to remember the sacrifices that the men and women made to ensure that lasting peace, on November 11, 1919, Woodrow Wilson, the 28th President of the United States, proclaimed an Armistice Day in the United States. And whereas in order for a grateful nation to pay homage to veterans of all wars on June 1, 1954, Dwight Eisenhower, the 34th President of the United States, signed into law a bill introduced by United States Representative Edwin Rees from Kansas renaming Armistice Day to Veterans Day. And whereas in 1971, Richard Nixon, the 37th President of the United States, declared Veterans Day to be observed on the second Monday in November. And whereas because the commemoration of Veterans Day was a matter of historic and patriotic significance, on September 20, 1975, Gerald Ford, the 38th President of the United States, signed Public Law 94-97, which returned the annual observance of Veterans Day to its original date of November 11. Now therefore, I, Bob McParland, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Sebastian, and on behalf of the Sebastian City Council, do hereby proclaim and call upon all residents of Sebastian to observe a moment of silence at 11:00 a.m. on November 11 in remembrance of all the veterans who fought to safeguard our heritage and freedom and to celebrate and proudly display the flag of the United States of America.
And Mr. Mayor, in a matter of expediency, if you don't mind.
I got all night, Wayne. Don't worry.
I don't, because I've got another meeting at 7 o'clock. On behalf of the members of the American Legion Post 189 and veterans of foreign wars post 10210, I would like to thank the mayor and the city council of Sebastian for their guidance and support in helping the two posts get hooked up to county surage. This goes a long way in bringing the establishments up to modern standards. We would like to further thank Mr. Joe Griffin, city manager of the city of Sebastian, for his help in making this project actually happen. I'm signing this as the commander of the American Legion Post and as the chairman of the Veterans Advisory Committee for the city of Sebastian. And I give back microphone.
Thank you. Thank you. All right.
Thank you, city of Sebastian.
Thank you.
Wonderful place.
I think it's important to remember Veterans Day is to just remember that all gave some and some gave all. Barbara Hoffman.
How you doing? All right.
Barbara does a tremendous job. You want to know what's going on and around Indian River County, you listen to her on Bob Suze. You know where you can take your kids to, where there's adult fund, everything. And this is a proclamation for National Arts and Humanities Month, which is October. Whereas our centuries have changed through trial and triumph, the arts and humanities have chronicled history in ways that have brought the past to life and provided a vivid vision to our journey forward. During National Arts and Humanities Month, we celebrate artistic expression in all its forms and honor the ways they helped define the great American story. Whereas as artists open our hearts and minds, they embolden our dreams, connect us in common purpose, and inspire us to reach for the tomorrow we seek. Whereas our young people have the ability to renew the world we share, we can empower them through the arts and humanities so they can chart bold paths and write America's next great chapters. Whereas every stroke of the brush, stitch of the needle, or moment of the memoir uniquely marks our society and contributes to our national character. This month, we recognize the ways the arts and humanities have forever changed our country, and we recommit to ensuring every person has the opportunity and the freedom to question, discover, and create. Now therefore, I, Bob McParland, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Sebastian, and on behalf of the Sebastian City Council, do hereby proclaim October as National Arts and Humanities Month in Sebastian and call upon our citizens to celebrate and promote the arts and culture and encourage the greater participation in taking action for the arts and humanities in our community.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and members of the public for proclaiming the month of October 2016 National Arts and Humanities Month. The arts are an important policy asset and prosperity generator for our country. In addition to the inherent value to society, the arts offer a distinctive blend of benefits. As economic drivers, the arts create jobs, they produce tax revenue. A strong arts sector is an economic asset that stimulates business activity, attracts tourism revenue, and retains a high-quality workforce. The arts have been shown to be successful and sustainable strategy for revitalizing cultural, rural areas, inner cities, and populations struggling with prosperity. An educational asset, the arts create young imaginations and facilitate success in school, enhancing students' academic achievement in multiple subject areas. They provide the critical thinking, communications, and innovation skills that are essential for a productive 21st century workforce. In health and wellness, the arts foster physical, mental, and emotional health, aiding recovery processes and contributing to well-being. The arts can be effective tools for achieving and maintaining wellness for aging adults and people suffering from trauma, including military combat and personnel and veterans. As civic catalysts, the arts create a welcoming sense of place and a desirable quality of life. The arts also support a strong democracy, engaging citizens in civic discourse, providing forums for important issues, and encouraging collection problem solving. As cultural legacies, the arts preserve culture and heritage, passing along a community's unique character and traditions to future generations of citizens. To demonstrate the abundance of arts and culture in our community, you only have to look at the fresh-off-the-press 2016-2017 Arts and Cultural Guide. This production is made possible by our 60 advertisers and by the support of the Tourist Development Council. Our online calendar, updated daily with new information, lists events by day, week, and month. Together, these calendars are the most comprehensive in Indian River County. We have delivered a box of these guides for you to share with the community, and there are many of them on the back table. Please feel free to pick one up. By investing in the arts, we plant seeds for the future and make our communities better places to live, locally as well as nationally. The arts mean business. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks, Father.
All right, next we got Mr. Casey Lunsford, provost for Indian River State College. Indian River State College is a great partner. It's not just an institution of bricks and mortar up there, it's a real partner in the community. You know, Indian River State College has participated in a lot of things, you know, concerning poverty forums and just thoroughly involved in trying to get the best education for all citizens in our community. And it's a proclamation because Indian River State College was recognized as a top-10 national finalist for the prestigious Aspen Prize for Community College Excellence. Whereas Indian River State College has been nationally recognized for excellence as a top-10 finalist for the prestigious Aspen Prize for Community College Excellence, and whereas Indian River State College has earned this distinction in consecutive Aspen Prize cycles, first earning the top-10 designation in 2015. And whereas there are approximately 1,000 public institutions eligible for the award nationally, and approximately 1% reached this point in the competition. And whereas Indian River State College sees an astonishing 94% of its graduates go on to find employment or continue their pursuit of higher education, and whereas Indian River State College is highly valued as a resource for workforce and economic development, with graduates typically earning more than twice the average entry wage in the four-county service area. And whereas we commend Indian River State College for its leadership in higher education and provision of accessible, affordable, educational opportunities for our citizens, resulting in their career advancement, higher income, and a better quality of life. Now therefore, I, Bob McParland, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Sebastian, and on behalf of the Sebastian City Council, do hereby congratulate and commend Indian River State College's strong commitment to student success by delivering programs aligned with the community's needs.
I'd like to take a moment to thank not only Mayor McParland, but the entire board and Ms. Coy, who started this 10 years ago, I found out, in Sebastian River. We are, we are proud to be a partner with Sebastian, the city of Sebastian. We're proud to be on your campus. Joe Griffin, the city manager, has worked with us carefully. We feel like we have become a partner with Sebastian here on this very location. We have classes going on tonight, right over here on the second floor. We are now up to 400 students a semester taking classes right here in Sebastian. I want to thank Dr. Katie Knoll, who is a program director. She's been very integrated in getting that program up and running here. But we want to let you know, we are partnered with the city of Sebastian, all the way down to Hobbs Sound. We appreciate the recognition. We're very proud to be recognized for this. Our site visit with the national group will be November 1st and 2nd, and hopefully in March, you're going to hear that we are the winners.
Mr. Lunsford, I have a question for you.
Absolutely.
10 years ago, when you came here, no one was really optimistic that this was going to work. I think it was only people were thinking, eh, we'll give it a year, eh, it's not going to work. You guys have done a tremendous job in making this program so, so successful. But when we started this year, and when I fought and fought to get you in the building next door, and you came, I said at that time, and I meant it and still do, I don't want you just on the second floor. I would like you to build a campus in North County. And I'm still waiting. I'll be around for a long time, so I'm going to keep bugging you.
You're welcome to do so. We look forward to that opportunity.
Thanks so much for everything.
There goes Ms. Coy. Rolling down the gauntlet. But I think, you know, one of the things about Indian River State College, I think one of the most important points is that it remains affordable. It's one of the cheapest, I think it's in the top 10 in the country as far as cost per credit and the education you get, which is just phenomenal. So, thank you. Scott, you can come up and get started.
Members of council, my name is Scott Baker, airport director for Sebastian Municipal Airport. Barbara, can we have the first slide on the television, please? The scene that you see here is not a child's artwork, but it's a pretty somber picture of the composite radar at the time that the I-Wall was passing a beam, Sebastian, at 2:15 in the morning on Friday. The red arrow that you see there is pointing to a little blue dot, and that is the precise location of the Sebastian Airport. And as you can see, we were very fortunate to have missed the high speed and tremendous rain that's occurring in that first band. So, the Sebastian, so this report to you and to the citizens of Sebastian is just an aftermath type of a report and to describe the support operations that the airport played in helping Florida Power and Light respond to the power outages here in Sebastian. By the way, local winds were estimated at our airport at a pretty consistent 50 miles an hour with gusts up to about 80 miles an hour. We only have unofficial statistics on that, though. On Monday, the 3rd of October, Florida Power and Light reached out to the city of Sebastian to ask if the airport would be available for staging equipment, as they did during the hurricanes of 2004. And of course, the city responded in the affirmative. On Tuesday, the next day, our offices were alerted that Florida Power and Light was on their way. Cranes, a little portable command center, arrived that same day, as did some portable floodlights. And that seemed to be it for Tuesday. The next day, Wednesday, the advance team for Florida Power and Light arrived. These are the logistics and traffic control people. And their job was to go ahead and set up the tremendous support network for all the utility crews that would be on their way. And then sure enough, on Friday morning, this is, this is the very first trucks that are, that are arriving at the airport. By that, by Friday afternoon, the number had grown to over 100. This is an aerial tour of the Sebastian Airport. It was courtesy of Josh Weeks from Pilot's Paradise, who has one of these fancy drones with a video camera. So I'll just give a rolling commentary of what we see here. Obviously, in the photograph, you can see utility trucks that are occupying one of our runways and its associated parallel taxiway. Right now, the drone is overflying the dining tent that's in the lower center portion of the screen. You can see trucks that are on their way being dispatched to, to take care of power outages. Located, located at the end of runway 10 was their storage depot, so as trucks came by, they would pick up transformers, wire, and that sort of thing, whatever they needed to, to help repair, service. The trucks on the left, the orange truck, the orange-colored trucks, you've seen them quite often, these are the tree clearing crews from Asplund. Their nickname are called veggies. That's what, that's what the contractors call them, veggies. And then the line crew, the line crews have to follow the, the tree clearing crews. So quite often, the line crews can, cannot be dispatched until the debris has been removed by the folks in the orange trucks. You can see a supply of transformers there, we're overflying. Sebastian closed runway 10 and reciprocal heading 28 to allow Florida Power and Light to occupy five lanes of parking on this runway. And then where the orange trucks are at, that is the associated parallel taxiway to runway 10. At the time, we were able to reinstate operations on runway 523, so the airport was open immediately after the storm. Runway 5 is on your, on the right-hand side of the picture. And so we did have an occasional, occasional aircraft arrive, and in fact, we had the folk, our good friends from Flight Safety were going about business as usual, and we had to ask them to go place someplace else because we did not have any taxiways open, so an aircraft would have to land and then taxi back on the active taxiway, I mean, on the active runway in order to take off again. And it was causing a major safety concern for us. This is the, the old runway 1331, which is now closed. This also was an area for, for trucks to park and to, and to come in. You can see, see the crews there are pretty excited about being on video. We're approaching some long tractor-trailers on the right-hand side. These are crew accommodations. The first few trucks are actual, hold about 40 bunks each. And so crews would take a nap there or spend the night. The last two trucks are shower facilities, and the two tankers that you see on the right-hand side are potable water. They had, the shower trucks had propane power to, to heat up the water. This is Skydive Sebastian. As a preemptive measure, they removed the cover off of one of their Quonset buildings. The Quonset on the left-hand side with the Skydive sign is actually made out of metal. The one on the right is made out of fabric. Here's some more sleeping birds. Making our way now over to Pilot's Paradise on the right. These containers that they were coming up are, was the command and control for, for Florida Power and Light. And that building on the, on the small white building with the blue signage on the right is their number-one communications. And apparently, that serves a pretty critical part of their, of their operations. There's a very, very few places on the airport where that could be located. The tent on the left is their assembly area. The tent that we're coming up onto right now is the dining tent, and the kitchen is immediately behind it. It was quite an operation. Here's a morning scene on Sunday morning when, where we had upwards of 600 vehicles were there, and over 1,200 crew, crew members, line men and line women, were there. Over 250 support people were there, traffic control, meal preparation, cleanup, getting supplies together. Another close-up, another close-up of the, the tankers for the water and the shower, and the shower facilities. I was able to identify trucks from all over the eastern seaboard. We had, we had crews here, contract crews, from Michigan, Massachusetts, New York, Ohio, North Carolina, South Carolina, Georgia, and Texas, and I'm sure more that I was unable to identify. Florida Power and Light has mutual aid reciprocal agreements with these utility companies, sort of like a NATO alliance. When one area suffers a disaster, the others come running to help restore, restore power. And I was able to interview a number of visiting crews, again, from all over. And I know that their fatigue factor had to be way up there, but they were absolutely kind and customer service-oriented. I met them even on the streets of Sebastian, and they did a good job. The, the veggies, the Asplund people here. More views of the sleeping accommodations. Not, not everyone stayed overnight in the trailers. They had upwards of 25 buses that would take crew members back and forth to hotels as far away as Orlando. They would take them home in the evening, then bring them back at 5:00 in the morning for their morning briefing at 5, at 5:30. Short scene of the, of the dining hall. As I mentioned before, they had 1,200 members, 1,200 crew people here at its height. And this, this little dining hall and the food, food preparation service on Sunday prepared 3,600 meals for breakfast, lunch, and dinner. First aid center was on, on the scene. They had a tent so that crews could use the internet and then check in with their family. This is that communications pod that I pointed out earlier. The heroes of 2004, Pike Energy from North Carolina, they didn't have a stronger presence this year as, as during 2004, but these, these folks are absolute heroes. Palmdale Oil out of Fort Pierce was providing fuel service for all the vehicles on, on the field. Joe, I can't remember, what day was it that Mr. Solaji arrived? What day did Mr. Solaji arrive? Was it on Monday or Tuesday? Monday. On Monday, the president of Florida Power and Light, Eric Solaji, and his, and his vice president for transmission and substations arrived for a visit. And our city manager was there to meet and, and to personally thank Florida Power and Light for their, you know, being responsive to the needs of Sebastian. And so we received a lot of praise also from Florida Power and Light for the work that the city has done to accommodate them. This is, our, our airport is probably, was identified as being the largest marshaling area for, for Florida Power and Light. And then when they first started out, they weren't, they were not thinking about having as many as 600 vehicles come in. But once they realized that the, that they had that space available, they just kept pouring trucks, more and more were coming in. And so I think that that was bound to have an effect on the surrounding community in a positive way. So that's a quick report and a little overhead. So that's a quick report and a little overhead shot—a goodbye shot of—it's amazing, we had such beautiful weather the day after the storm, but—and I think Sebastian has bounced back pretty quickly, and I think that the airport had a small part in helping that. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. I mean, you know, undoubtedly, FPL had a tremendous response here to our community, but I want to take the moment to acknowledge our own city staff. I know, you know, definitely—I was able to sit in on some of the pre-hurricane meeting and also the post-hurricane meeting and the planning and everything that went through. And Joe, I guess it was several months ago, you had tasked Wayne Esseltine with coming up with an emergency plan, with all the what-ifs and what can we do and how can we be prepared. And Joe, you know, when I came to the meetings and I took part in the state evacuation, because I work for a state agency, but you guys were top-notch. You came in there, and I don't even think that some of the citizens realize how tirelessly they worked throughout the storm and after the storm. There were several members of the city that slept in the building here to make sure that they were up and running right after the storm. Once the winds went, they were out there on the roads clearing things. Chief Morris and her staff were responding to incidents all the way up until the winds got too high, but then right afterwards, they were right out there looking at the roads, coordinating with Public Works and our Buildings Department as to what needs to be cleared, and they had a very effective plan, and it worked. You know, thank God the storm didn't hit us, you know, the way it was forecast, but we were ready for that, and you guys worked tirelessly, again, like I said, and it's—you know, the management, the leadership of this management team and what you have put together, Mr. Griffin, is top-notch, and I think the city is very appreciative of all that happened, as well as all the employees. You know, they had their own houses that were affected, but they were out here taking care of the city business, and as well, I would be remiss not to mention the number of city volunteers who assisted the city staff, as well as the Police Department, in helping out with everything, and all I can say is, is thank you very much.
Here, here. Can I just say a word to—
Yes.
You summed up the city staff. I was going to say something, but I won't repeat your words because they were spot-on, and the residents didn't get to see a lot of the work. But I want to talk about the airport operation was—if y'all didn't get a chance to ride out and see it, it was—we just saw it on TV, but on the ground, looking at it in swing, phenomenal, and I just have to laugh. Two days ago, I think, in the Press Journal, I was reading a little article that said—about—talked about the staging area at the Stewart Airport with a couple dozen FPL trucks, you know, electric trucks, and it just made me laugh. If they only knew, and if anybody had only taken a moment to come up and see this operation in little city Sebastian, it was spectacular, and thank you to the airport director and all the staff. Let's keep inviting them back, because they did a spectacular job of returning our power. And thank you, FPL, and thank you, airport, for giving them the space.
I didn't—I didn't know they were serving food at the airport. I was driving around the rest of the city. If I knew they were serving food, I would have been out there.
They had a slow cooker. They had a big ol' cooker out there, and I rode by, and I was pretty hungry myself. I'm going, "Is there barbecue?"
All right. Any other brief announcements? All right. Well, the Sebastian River Area Chamber of Commerce is holding their candidate's forum next Tuesday, October 18th, here in the Sebastian City Council, beginning at 7:00 PM. And early voting is available at City Hall, starting October 24th through November 5th, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. They'll be here in the council chambers. Any other brief announcements?
One quick.
Yes.
The—for those of you who are looking forward to the haunted house on Main Street, there's been a little delay due to Hurricane Matthew. It kind of fell flat, but they are frantically rebuilding, and I'm sorry, I left the little notes at home on—but the first two days that they were scheduled to be open, it's not going to happen. They will be open. Go to the Junior Women's Club webpage, and you can check out the days and the times. So they will be opening. They're planning on it. It's just two days—the first two days—done open. Thank—
All right. Thank you. Any other announcements? All right. Leads us up to item seven, our consent agenda. Move approval. Seven A through F?
Second.
All right. Second. Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes.
Ms. Coy.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mayor McPartlin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Leads us up to nine—item eight, committee reports and appointments. We have an opening on the construction board. Ms. Williams?
It's your incumbent. Her term has expired, and she would like to serve again. She's the only applicant.
All right. That makes it very easy.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hayes, and congratulations on your reappointment. Any other committee reports?
Can I just ask, Jeanette, that there's still openings on the construction board? I think that—if I counted right, there's like—
Yes.
—two more or three more openings—
Three more.
—for people who are interested, so please apply. We need you.
All right. Thank you. You can pick up applications with Ms. Williams for any of those boards that might interest you. Any other reports? No? All right. We have no public hearings, no unfinished business. Leads us up to public input. Is the time anyone from the public wish to talk about anything not already on the agenda? Yes, sir. Just state your name and your address for the record, please.
David P. Cherry, probation—used to be a probation—used to be a probation officer, so I prefer not to state my address, but a long-term resident of Sebastian. Mr. Hill can verify that. He used to live next door to me. I have a request. I'm now retired, so I tried to do some community service work at the Parks Department here in Sebastian. We have a number of branches that are need trimming, okay? This was prior to the hurricane, and now it seems like a mute point because the hurricane took most of them down, they became flying debris. But I was told that the city needed—an individual needed an arborist to be with him at the time, and I was given the name. The city doesn't have an arborist on staff, yet the rule requires an arborist to be present if any trimming of the park trees to be done. I live close to Hardy Park, and I'd like to keep it looking good, and I wanted to sign a release, a waiver, so that if I hurt myself while I'm doing it, there would be no liability to the city. But with the wording, I guess that the arborist has to be present, and there's no arborist on staff with Sebastian City. There's a program at Indian River State College next June, a $300 course to become an arborist, then it's a $150 fee to take the test. I'd recommend either they change the wording so they allow people to do volunteer work and cut only dead branches, or that they paid—the city paid to have somebody take the arborist course so that a volunteer could go under their supervision to cut. It was just a suggestion that I'm—like I said, I was out at Hardy Park today raking up the dead debris that was from the trees and everything, but it could have been much worse, and I just would like to keep our parks looking great. We have wonderful parks, and I'm a proud citizen of Sebastian.
Right.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wish to speak? All right. Leads us up to new business. Item 14A, consider community center use by Alcathon at no charge. Mr. Griffin?
The local Alcoholics Anonymous are requesting no-charge use of community center for the three dates that are in your—in your packet, Thanksgiving Day, Christmas Eve, and New Year's Eve Day, and staff is recommending approval.
All right.
Move approval.
Second. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Yes, sir.
(inaudible) can you give any questions?
All right. So you're all good with it? That's good. Thank you for what you do. Any further council discussion on this matter? Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Mr. Gilmore.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mayor McPartlin.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes.
Ms. Coy.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Item 14B, resolution number R-16-22, engineering review inspection of right-of-way permit applications. Mr. Ginsburg?
Yes, sir. 14B is a resolution of the City of Sebastian, Indian River County, Florida, establishing a fee for existing rights-of-way permit application, providing for conflicts therewith, providing for an effective date.
All right. Mr. Griffin, you have any comments on this? I'm going to turn this over mostly to Frank, but just suffice it to say that we have in our land development code a section where if there is construction in our rights-of-way that we should have reviewed by the city engineer. So Frank, if you want to expand on that?
Sure. Again, Frank Wantnabi, the city engineer. I believe in the past, when you had a city engineer, the services was through the land development code to have utility companies fill an application, pay fee, and have inspections and go through the process, like similar to the county and our other cities. When you guys lost your city engineer, I think it's got kind of like lost in the process, and all we're doing is stepping back up, and since I'm here now, to activate that process again, to make sure we have inspections and a process to make sure when we have applications that they are looked at and there are no other issues regarding impacts to residents and other safety issues with these applications.
All right. Makes sense to me. Any questions for Mr. Wantnabi and Mr. Griffin?
I have a couple.
Sir, did you—yes.
Pardon me. That's pretty hot, but I agree 100% with making sure—with the idea about what we're doing here. The only concern I have is the effect that this may have on someone who would do a front-yard swale improvement or replace their pipe that's under their driveway. Would that be included in this?
No, that's a separate permit we have. We have driveway right-of-way permits—
Okay.
—and that's a totally separate building application permit.
Okay. What is that? That price? The price on that?
The current price, I think—it's $100.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. I just didn't want to impose an additional expense on making the repairs to those driveways and to those pipes, so thank you.
All right. Any other questions for staff? Hear a motion?
Move approval of resolution number R-16-22, engineering review inspection of rights-of-way permit applications.
Second. All right. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this resolution? Any further discussion? Ms. Williams, roll call, please.
Mayor McPartlin.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes.
Ms. Coy.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Next up, 14C, discuss Indian River County's proposed ordinance regarding medical marijuana treatment centers. I asked that the city manager put this item on—it just so happened, I was down at the county commission last week, and I seen that it was being put forward for their land development code, and they were having a public hearing. They scheduled one yesterday, but they knew with the storm, and it's really going to take head in the future, and it's just—you know, medical marijuana is coming down the pike, so just want to make sure that we are prepared for it, making sure that it's not allowed to be sold in just anywhere and about, and you know, I had discussions with the county as far as no drive-through marijuana sales, and it's also because, you know, when this does come, it's going to be, to me, similar to when the opiates came down to Florida. We were several years behind in the enforcement and regulation of the opiate use, and I can see the marijuana sales having the same kind of effect on us. I don't deny the benefits from medical marijuana, but what I see is the drain and the impact it has on families that are already struggling, and I can foresee, not only is it going to be a drain on the social services with this, there's going to be a drain on the resources, the police department, because there's going to have to be additional training that is done for somebody who is under the influence of a marijuana. So I was just looking at if—whatever the county passes, if we could similarly try and mirror what they do to benefit the community.
I agree with you. I'm glad you put this on, because I saw the agenda for the county, and I just want to know with Mr. Ginsburg's opinion, for us to enact—we need to get on this really quick if we're going to do something, because by the—when the state—whatever the state enacts could supersede anything that we do. However, if we come up with rules ahead of time, they might be able to be grandfathered in. Is that—is am I thinking correctly or no?
Yeah, it is a possibility. There are so many factors that—
Right.
—evolves—that is a possible way of doing it, that it could be grandfathered in local provisions.
It's like the—the short-term housing thing, you know? All of a sudden, the law was passed, and no one else—then you were not allowed to come in and make any changes once the state law was enacted. So, Mr. Mayor, what are you—what are you thinking we need to do as the next step?
I guess that would be Mr. Ginsburg getting in touch with Mr. Rheingold and, you know, whatever they're looking at, and of course, I've discussed with Mr. Ginsburg, trying to see if there was a way we could tax it. He tells me no, but there could be something as far as regulation costs potentially. Mr. Ginsburg?
Yes. I'll—I'll be happy to communicate with the county attorney. The way they've done it is—I think they want their—I believe—they're going to permit municipalities to sign on. In other words, have them do the regulation, and it would be effective here as well.
Ah.
Or we could do our own thing. Either way, in fact, that's the formula they use for the pill mill ordinance. They had a county provision. We went a different way, so their provision doesn't apply here. So the county hasn't yet enacted anything, but I'll talk with Mr. Rheingold and coordinate with him and see. A lot is going to depend on the policy that you decide you want for the city. It may be consistent with what the county is doing or not. As you know, and you've reminded me many times, Sebastian is a little different. It's a special, small town with a particular outlook, and what's done in other jurisdictions, especially larger ones, may not be appropriate here. So that's something that we'll look at, and I'm going to—down the road, we'll have to look at some policy issues if we decide to go forward with this.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, please?
Yes. In reading the—in what the county is doing, it becomes very apparent to me that their goal is to zone out the possibility of having one of these places in the county. If you read, it's—it's completely arduous, nothing west of 66, any—nothing within a thousand feet of a church or a school, nothing within 500 feet of a right-of-way, of a major thoroughfare. There's a—it's completely—in my opinion, being done to zone any possibility of that out, and I would be concerned as to whether or not that were even legal. I believe that—I've been told in the past that that is not, and I also believe that there's maybe two small, little tiny sections in Indian River County where this is—where this would become possible. And I think we also need to become cognizant of what, you know, whether we agree with medical marijuana or not. If it passes, that means 60% of the people do, so we have to be cognizant of that fact as well. So just saying that we want to be against the dispensing of any medical marijuana, or you know, this is something we have to absolutely be on top of and make sure we don't get, you know, just a storefront drug dealer. We absolutely want to make sure that doesn't take place, but we have to be also knowledgeable about things the way they are in America and in the state of Florida, and if 60% of the voters say that they want this, should we be zoning it out of possibility? And if we do that, would it be legal in the first place? So those are all very important issues that we have to look at going forward, and it appears to me that the county has decided that their route is going to be to make it impossible through zoning.
Then we need to be looking at independent right-of-way, too. Maybe that's—we can't be waiting for the county either, because we don't know how long it's going to take them to react. So we can always go and look at what they've done, but I think we need to look at preparing our own.
Right. And very similarly, we were the first to go with the e-cigarettes, about how they would be regulated. We beat the county on that. We beat the county on that, we beat the other municipalities, and of course, we have the strongest ordinance that is in force. So similarly, I mean, you think you could run with something, Mr. Ginsburg, that?
Certainly, certainly.
All right. And nobody wants to zone it completely out. We want people, if they got to have it, we just want to be able to regulate it, you know, for the benefit. All right. Do you need a motion or anything, Mr. Ginsburg?
No.
Any further discussion on this item?
Anyone from the public want to speak about medical marijuana? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilman, Councilman. I'm, uh, my name's Arnold Deal, I live at 418 Arbor Street, I've been a homeowner in Sebastian for 20 years, and a very large part of Florida Cannabis Action Network, we're on the board and committee chair. We have been activists in Florida for, since the 90s, for over 20 years. And I would very much like to be able to help educate, you know, if you wanted to have, you know, community workshops or anything like that, or anything about this. One thing I'd like to share with you, the very difference that we are as Sebastian is the very difference that cannabis is to all these opiates and other pharmaceuticals that, as an elderly population, and Sebastian's pretty strong, and we're kind of a retirement community, so much more we should encourage a natural source of health for the people instead of pharmaceuticals, which causes a lot of harm and a lot of side effects, we all know. One of the things I would like to say is, so many of the things that you've heard about cannabis is lies. If you've ever heard anything negative about it, those are lies, and they're pushed so hard that people don't even look anymore to see any facts supporting them. It doesn't even matter, like, the gateway drug, or it hurts your brain cells. The United States has had a patent, number 6630507, since 2002, for it being a neuroprotectant. So, I mean, it actually protects our brain cells, and we've been told for so long that it harms our brain. So the, these lies that we've been told have just been for big business and greed and pharmaceuticals, and I'm not going to get into all that. I just want to encourage you to be a light in this county and not let them, like Mr. Hill said, try to regulate it out, because this is such a more natural, healthy choice for the people than what is now available out there. And I want you also to know that we're not necessarily waiting for amendment two. Cannabis, medical cannabis is legal in Florida now. We have high CBD, legal for epilepsy and certain illnesses and cancer, and we have a high TAC available for people with one year left to live, if they have two doctors say, they have one year left to live for end-of-life choice. We have dispensaries in Tallahassee and Clearwater that are, have been open and running. Supposedly, they're building one in Malabar Road. I just don't want to see us force our people and our population to have to drive out of the city or drive so far to go and get a more natural choice. So I just want to encourage you folks to, please, educate, you know, learn about this. It's all new to everyone, I understand. I'm kind of Florida cannabis expert for Florida Can, so I'd be more than happy to share with you the science behind it, you know, or anything that you would like. And I thank you for your consideration.
All right, thank you, sir. I try not to get into all the medical aspects of the medical marijuana, but I've spent my career in child welfare, and the state of Florida receives over 300,000 child abuse reports each and every year. And over 70% of those 300,000 cases involve drugs. And the leading causes of reasons children get removed from their home are due to drugs, and that's one of my concerns, and also the stuff that's out there. Maybe for me, if I smoked marijuana, it wouldn't affect my brain so much, but for the young that are out there that don't have a fully developed brain, marijuana impacts that. And I serve on the Substance Awareness Council for Indian River County, and that is some the youth are looking at. Weed is natural, it has no effect, maybe on an older person, but on a younger person with an undeveloped brain, it has major implications that are long-lasting. Anyone else want to speak about medical marijuana? Yes, sir.
Ben Hocker, City of Sebastian. In 70-plus years, I don't have enough fingers to talk about the people that have no longer here due to the use of marijuana. And multiple other people I know going through rehab. They're going through hell because of it. I look on TV, I see, I think it's Colorado, Oklahoma, one of those states, where the people are walking in, there's a doctor sitting there, and he hands a prescription because the gentleman says, "I got pain." And then he has a multiple assortment of cannabis to choose from, special grown Canada, special list, that, the other thing. If we have dispensaries that are already here, as the gentleman said, it's a hardship for the people to drive to Orlando wherever. Then there should be a network put in where that product is brought to the hospital, given out under supervision at the hospital, not by going into a, as the mayor said, a glorified pill factory. And that's what this is going to evolve into. If you need it, I can walk into any of those other state places and go, "I have horrible pain, thank you," and get a prescription written there from some doctor from who knows where, but it really won't make any difference. It's a legal piece of paper that will cover it. There's no real control over it once it opens up. Restricting it in an area, yes, that's great, but we've got the whole state of Florida to look at, we've got the whole United States to look at. What research has really been done on the amount of cannabis? I mean, the government's giving directive so people can grow a specific plant. Well, you don't think that these shops are going to just have government-spec plants? It's coming across the borders. Matter of fact, I don't know if they really need a law, it's just making it legal so you're not arrested. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak about medical marijuana? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Carolyn Carpel, and I live at 418 Arbor Street, also in Sebastian. And I'm going to just go ahead and read this, because I'm a little nervous. And I'm sure that every one of us here tonight knows or loves someone that would benefit from cannabis. And do we really want to make it harder for them to get medication? As Arnold said, cannabis is already legal in Florida for a limited number of medical conditions, and amendment two is just going to open that up for more conditions. We've got approximately 24,000 residents in Sebastian, almost 3,000 of those are veterans, including myself, and we always talk about supporting and respecting our veterans. But by making it hard for them to get medical cannabis, that is not supporting or respecting them, I believe. I feel it would be in the best interest of our citizens to have medical treatment facilities in our community that are easily accessible. And I also work with Florida Cannabis Action Network, which is one of the oldest advocacy organizations in the state, and I know we'd be happy to meet with council members and/or staff to help draft our ordinance that would be most beneficial to our citizens. It's a life-saving plant that we shouldn't be afraid of. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to speak on medical marijuana? All right. Yes, ma'am.
Just want to reiterate something Councilmember Hill said, because we could have some very interesting discussions and very passionate discussions on both sides of this issue, and we all have an opinion, I'm sure, on the issue, one way or the other. But I agree with Councilmember Hill. It doesn't matter what your opinion is, we need to be prepared, because it's everyone in the state of Florida. So we need to be proactive, and fighting the good and the bad of it is not the issue at this point. We need to be ready and have a plan, and saying we don't want any of it is not going to work, probably will be against the law. So, I agree, Councilmember Hill. Let's get on with this and look at what Sebastian can do in the best interest of every single person that lives here, and protecting the people that we need to protect and providing service to the people that need the service. That's the bottom line.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, you catch more than noise, Mr. Ginsburg? I know you'll craft a fine, well-thought-out ordinance. Thank you. All right, leads us up to item 14D, declaration of local state of emergency. Mr. Griffin? Yes, sir. Prior to the storm, obviously, the city attorney crafted a document for a declaration of a local state of emergency, and that, that enabled the city manager, through an order, to have certain things at his disposal in case the storm was incredibly serious, catastrophic, or what we experienced. On page 145 of 145 in your packet, you will see that what those, those are enumerated there, what those orders could be. If necessary, there was only one alpha that I enacted, and that was recalling of city employees from vacation, canceling days off, and mobilizing all personnel required for disaster response. The seven days for that declaration of local state of emergency has expired, so I would recommend to council that that be canceled. And I have the original document that the mayor can sign after the meeting tonight. I would like to talk about a couple other things that, that are related to this, if council would like to hear it.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Couple things. First of all, Frank's going to make a presentation with regard to where we are, give a little history on our debris removal, but with regard to some of our employees, we had to make a choice, I had to make a choice, as to what essential and non-essential employees were going to stay around City Hall at the end of last week, and I chose to release some folks early, keep some folks here that were going to be, hesitate to use the word essential, everybody's essential, but that we needed for debris cleanup and things like that. So I activated a number of people on Saturday morning, and Sunday they worked. So we had, and most of those folks, the vast majority of those folks were in public works. I would like to do something for those folks because of their dedication. First of all, I want to tell you what they would be, what would be availed to them, and that would be that they would get time and a half for each one of those days worked, time and a half. And they also would get eight hours of comp time for each day that they worked. However, it was such a, such a real tough time for them, most of them, and they worked, for example, on Sunday up until 5:00, long days. I would like to give them a monetary bonus, and this is what I'm proposing, $100 a day for Saturday and Sunday, for each one of those, for folks who are out there in debris cleanup and clearing our streets and putting us back on our feet very quickly. So I would like to ask council's approval for that. That isn't going to be an awful large amount of money. I think it's well worth it. It would apply to anyone where there was no disciplinary issues that came up, and I'm not aware of any right now, so I would like to ask council approval of that.
I don't have any problem with that.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right.
The other thing I'd like to ask Frank to come up, make a presentation with regard to our debris removal.
You need a vote on the, on the money now? Are we good? Everybody fine with that?
It's below my, it's below my
Below the threshold?
Threshold limit, so.
Take, anyone from the public wish to speak on a $100 bonus for the hard-working employees who came in on the weekend and in addition to their work?
$100 a day for two days.
For two days? Anyone from the public wish to speak on that? Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes.
Ms. Coy.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mayor McPartlin.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Another thing I didn't mention was, you know what, a lot of the other municipalities, they waited till Monday to clean it up.
Yeah.
Here, the city in Sebastian, they worked right after the winds died down on Friday and Saturday and Sunday to get things going for the city. And, I mean, that's extremely impressive, and, Mr. Griffin, I know how hard you worked, I know how hard staff worked, and it's well-deserved. Again, thank you.
The county's not cleaning up until, starting tomorrow, Thursday. The county is starting tomorrow, and we've made, well, we'll find out how far we are.
Go ahead, Frank.
Before we, before we proceed, could we get a motion also on the cancellation of the declaration of local emergency, please?
Move to approve the cancellation of the declaration of local state of emergency.
I'll second that, but with a caveat, is it not, doesn't it automatically cease to be in authority?
Yes, but our ordinance does require that it come back to the board, to the city council, for your determination as to whether it should be continued, amended in some way, canceled. So I'd like to, if we formally do it, then we've completed what our ordinance talked to.
All right. Anyone from the public wish to, they don't want to see continued mayor's martial law going on? All right, any further council discussion?
He might, he might cancel beer and wine sales, so be, yeah.
All right. Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Ms. Coy.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mayor McPartlin.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Wantnabi.
All right, again, thank you very much, Frank Wantnabi, your city engineer. I have a quick PowerPoint just to highlight the assessment after the hurricane, and then where we are with the debris removal. Just real quickly, after Friday, after the storm, we started our engineering and our public works assessment on the damages. All streets, bridges, and structures were looked at. There were no damages within our facilities beyond the pier we had impacted. We had a lot of trees and a lot of blocked streets, but by the end of that day, what they called the first push is to open up all roadways, all the roadways were opened up. I want to show you some pictures. This is a picture of, I think this was Clermont, tree down. This is right after, this was 6:00 AM, well, 7:00 AM, when I was driving around doing the assessment. This was, this is off of Tulip, the road was flooded, the fire pump was out there, some trees down. This was a picture of Easy Street by 512, the tree down blocking the streets. It wasn't as devastating as everyone thought would be, we had some trees down, but not as bad. This was Main Street, we had it blocked off for about 30 minutes, public works came by, took out the tree, opened up the road. Little damages, again, this is the main street pier, as you see, it's all damaged, so it has to be repaired by the decking, some of the piles has to be redone. This is over by the yacht club, so just, overall, we didn't have major, major damages. That, I was in a meeting today, similar to Falls Mary, similar to Vero Beach, similar to the county, most of their damages are on the waterfront side, mainly by the sand dunes and that kind of restoration. So we lucked out severely. Where we are with the debris removal, what we call in the process, what they call the pass, you do a first pass, sometimes a second pass. As of Saturday, we looked at bringing in our hauler, because of the scale and size, we talked to our hauler, and based on the price that they had, and based on the price that we had with a current contractor who already had equipment here, who was actually doing a Barber Street reconstruction, he had dump trucks and loaders sitting here ready to go. His price equal to the price of the, of the debris haulers that we had, and the debris haulers would have additional costs of monitors and other associated costs, the current contract was, Tim Rose was a lot less. So then we activated Tim Rose to move forward with the first pass, which is only the vegetation removal. Our city staff went out there in front of them as inspectors to make sure, and they're very good, the citizens. Initially, there was some washing machines, white goods, some other C and D, which is construction disposal debris was mixed in. We told them to get it out, and we'll move the vegetation, and they did. So they're very good. We moved forward, we had two teams created, we had a northern team, Philip took over the northern team, the southern team, Blake and Michelle took over, and then we used Tim Rose's crews to start doing the pass. Pass, again, is to pick up all the debris, vegetation debris along the roadway. We estimate completion of this, hopefully by this Friday, it may slip into Saturday, but that means overall, the city would have a complete pass. We're looking at probably close to about 7,000 cubic yards at the end of this first pass. We hope to start a week from now, not this coming month, but the following week, give it some time for it to collect back up again, do a second pass, and go head all the streets again, and conduct that removal. A little demonstration, what we saw, this was Saturday morning, we had our crews out there, they had two low They had two loaders in both areas, pushing and clearing the stuff off. Another picture of it again, showing how the debris being moved from the streets. All the residents were very satisfied. They were happy to see us out there. This is actually Barber Street. You can see the Cocina Rock. We were up on that Barber Street cleaning it up. The other, the southern crew had a bobcat, and you can see some of the trees. I mean, some of the stuff, there's no way waste management or an average person could do. There were some large trees and debris that a loader had to be brought in. Again, we also had two of our public works dump trucks, because at first, we were short on dump trucks, so we brought in some of our public works dump trucks. Example here, another example here of the roads being cleared off on the central part of town. This was Schuman Drive. We had to do some MOTs because it was a busy street. And these are all pictures of Saturday and Sunday, just right after the storm. This was, this is Caprona. Again, this is our public works, but this is Tim Rose's loader, but we co-shared and worked together. And then finally, this is our debris management site, which is at the airport. I just now emailed, I forgot to do this, so I apologize, but I just now emailed the state DEP to activate this site, because you have to activate your debris management site, which I did this evening. So that site is now active, but of course, you can see the pile of debris already on it. So with that, just a conclusion. Again, we did our assessment, fared up very well, minor damages were on the piers. Started our debris push on Friday, finished the push, started our debris removal, which is the pass on Saturday, about noon time. Completed, hope to complete the pass by this week, Friday or Saturday. We are coordinating with FEMA, and I'll let you know, I had a meeting with FEMA today at the EEOC with John King and all the other representatives from the county, city of Vero Beach, city of Falls Mary. A lot of discussion of where to go. Most of them have not yet started their debris removal, hoping to start soon or next week. We should be done with the first pass by this Friday or Saturday. So we're way out of the curve. We're documenting everything, we're photographing, we're making sure we have all the paperwork. We're hoping to get FEMA money. The FEMA process right now is the president has activated, they call category A, category B. Category A is for debris removal, category debris, debris. B is for emergency need response. Both those categories were activated, however, to get the money, you have to have what they call PA, public assistance. That means there's a threshold amount of money you have to reach. So in other words, devastation has to reach a certain threshold based on the level to authorize public assistance through the FEMA money source. We should be there. The county said their threshold is about a half a million. They already count about a half million dollars worth of damage, just the county alone. So if the county gets it, we all get it. So that means we have to have all the paperwork, all the documentation. That includes salaries as well, all the people who came in on the weekend, worked hard. We have to have separate timesheets, and we started already, we've been working with Cindy to make sure all that gets taken care of, so hopefully we get a reimbursement. Reimbursement, however, say, is 75%. That's still good, but 75%. 25 is our half. Then I, as to close out again, on Monday, October 24th, we will start the second pass.
Right. Save all the receipts and everything, right?
Yep. That's it.
Now, I know, I know the chief is going to have an after-action report for her department, you know, as to how, ways we can improve. I'm sure the city is doing the same thing. The one I got to ask, and because I was out there basically right after the storm, off of Laconia, you mentioned Tulip and Rosebush, the water was extremely high. But over time, it did go down. Is there any way for the future? I don't know, we make a bigger pipe? I know the water, it takes time to flow. Can we look at what we can potentially do?
That's a inherent problem that we need to eventually work out. That Laconia drainage system that flows out towards Stonecrop, there's several pipes that are undersized. It's been undersized for a long time. It's in our CIP for the future, but we need to take care of those.
Okay. But I know you guys, again, you guys were out and just phenomenal job.
I think part of that Laconia-Tulip area was, we're going to add an additional pipe. That was part of the fix that we were discussing last year during the rains, remember that?
That's correct.
So, but that, that area always has been a problem child, but.
Right. And I know you guys were out there, whenever I called you with something I saw around the city, you guys were already on it. You know where the real problem areas lie, which is a credit to you guys. I know every time it rains, you and Frank are driving around, just checking everything, you know? And again, I mean, it's, you guys truly care about the city, you know, and I can't express that enough. It's not just people coming in here for money, and they get paid and they go home. You actually, you guys live here, you love it here, you really care about the community and all the residents, and that can't be said enough. Any question?
One other tree down, too, on a house, that I'm not sure, you may or may not be aware of, is it Chesser that's right next to Stevenson?
Yes.
Off Fleming? Chesser, incredible, huge painted cypress. It looks like the tree, it's a beautiful tree. It's gone now. All you can see is the big old, but take a drive by there, too. This guy had it fall directly on his roof. And Mr. City Manager there, talking about arcing and sparking still behind that, behind the house on Chesser. You can't miss the house. The tree is laying right on top of the road.
Mr. Mayor, real quick?
Yes.
First, I'd say that, you know, in driving around Friday morning, there was a lot of water in the roads, but in driving around Saturday morning, there was not very much water in the roads. So let's be clear that the drain system is working much better than it used to. I would also like to say that, a question about, now, we've gone with a contractor who we're working the parking lot with right now, to help us with that debris removal. Do we not have, if I'm not mistaken, don't we have a company that's, that we're paying to sort of have on standby for these exact situations?
We do. We have two debris haulers
Right.
On contract. One in West Palm Beach, and where's the other one, Frank? I can't remember.
Actually, they must have been Texas.
Texas. It was, we had to make the decision on the fly Saturday morning of, do we activate them at this higher rate, because they have to have their own monitors that they call in and house people and feed them and all this other business? Or do we go with the contract we have with Tim Rose, get him out there right now? And we didn't know if we were going to be FEMA-eligible at that time, when we had to make that decision at about 10:00 o'clock.
Understanding, I believe you guys did exactly the right thing, and I'm extremely proud of the city and its efforts to do what we did, to make these roads safe and clear and to make our city functional immediately, and I cheer you for that. I just wonder, is it, are we paying for something? Because do not, don't we pay for this on an annual basis? It's like an insurance policy that we're paying annually in the event that we get a storm to have someone come in and clean up the debris.
They're on call. These contracts are not where they get any fee until they get activated. This storm was so large, we contacted, because I used to work in that field, and I, good example, Katrina, it was a devastating focus in one area, so you could bring all the equipment in, lots of equipment to use. And this one, you know, our debris hauler covers an area from Miami to Virginia. He says there's not enough trucks and loaders. He said he could have gotten equipment here, but he says, he actually told us to hang on to our trucks and loaders, because those contractors are going to be pulled real fast. They're calling everybody right and left.
Understood. Are we paying them money?
Nope.
So we don't have any upfront funds to them?
Nope.
We haven't, we haven't paid them a monthly, we haven't paid them annually. We just have them on a call only?
Yep.
For federal dollars. All right, very good. Thank you.
This is why we have $5.5 million in our general, $5 million now in our general fund. That's what it's coming out of, unless, hopefully, we'll get FEMA reimbursement, hopefully, but that's, could be a year or more from now, when the dollars come back.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Watanabe? Thank you, Frank. All right, brings us up to item 14E, concerning dangerous and unpermitted tree removal.
Ah, yes.
Ms. Coy?
Thank you. You know, I'm sure most of you have heard people say, and it's statistically proven, that most of the danger after, occurs after a storm. Most of the fatalities and injuries occur after the hurricane or after the tornado has passed through. People chopping off feet with chainsaws and doing silly things. And I can tell you that I have now learned that that is very, very true. I'm going to read you a memorandum for record about something that happened to me within hours after the hurricane had passed by. Please, I, some of the language, I am not using the entire expletives that were used that day, but I find even what I've written to be, I'm ashamed that someone would say this, but I want you to get the gist of what happened. Memorandum for record, subject dangerous, an unpermitted tree removal at 550 Palm Avenue. On Friday, October 7th, 2016, around 10:00 AM, I was driving my car on Palm Avenue, the street where I live. My neighborhood had been without power from Hurricane Matthew since 11:00 PM on Thursday night. My car windows were up, and the air conditioning was blasting as I rounded the corner of Banyon onto Palm. I was traveling very slow to avoid the debris and was focused on limbs and branches on the right side when I saw people waving their hands to my left and motioning to back up. As I looked to my left, I saw a man with a chainsaw, working on a very tall, perfectly erect pine tree. I quickly backed up and watched the pine tree fall completely across the road in front of me. Shaken but grateful to be alive, I got out of my car and I asked the nearest guy, "What are you doing?" He immediately responded in a violent, aggressive manner that I can only describe as a rage. "Who the F are you? It's none of your effing business what I am doing. This is my house and my effing property, and I can do whatever the F I want." I did not respond and was backing up towards my car. He continued shouting at me and following me to my car. At some point, he recognized me and said, "Oh, you're the bleeding-heart, effing liberal on council who lives down the street. Get the F off my property, get the F out of here." Since the tree was completely across the road, I had to back up and go around the block to get home. I immediately called the city manager to report the incident. The homeowner worked very quickly to cut up the tree and pile it alongside the road so the city of Sebastian can pick it up. He's been telling other neighbors who evacuated and weren't here that the hurricane took it down. There are numerous things wrong with the situation above, including, one, not posting road guards to stop traffic before dropping the tree. Two, not having a permit to cut down a perfectly healthy tree. Three, a homeowner thinking and saying that he can do anything he wants to his property. And four, a homeowner not being able to control his temper, rage, and language when dealing with another neighbor on public property, the road. I don't think the citizens of Sebastian should have to foot the bill for his wrongdoing. By removing the tree he illegally cut down, he would like us to believe that the hurricane took it down, but that clearly is not the case. I witnessed the incident. Cuts on the massive amount of debris are clean and made from the chainsaw. I would like to invite the homeowner to come to city council this Wednesday and explain to city council and the bleeding-heart, effing liberal councilwoman why he believes he should take, we should take away his entire tree at the public's expense. Attached is a picture, signed Andrea B. Coy. I start shaking just thinking about what happened, because had I not backed my car up, I might not be sitting here talking to you. To top off the very horrifying fact that a tree almost came down on my car and myself, I was then verbally abused by the man who did this. There's something really wrong with that, really, really wrong with that. And to this day, there'd be a whole bunch of ways we could have remedied this situation. One, if road guards had been out there stopping my car while I, I would have been back far enough, and it wouldn't be a close call. I probably would have turned around and went home and not paid attention to another thing and gone around the block. That would have been one remedy. That did not happen. Another remedy would have been him to come running over going, "Are you okay? Oh, my God, are you okay?" That didn't happen. He had absolutely no concern for my welfare, and instead, took his anger and rage out on me, who was driving the car down the road, doing nothing wrong. To this day, he has not come down the street to say, "Andrea, I'm sorry." That's probably not going to happen. I really don't expect it to happen. But it's really a shame that our society has some people like that. I want to tell you that that was the only bad incident since the hurricane last Thursday. Many of us were without power. I was without power from Thursday until Sunday afternoon. I lived through it. I lived through Francis and Jean where I lost a house. This was easy. This was a piece, a cakewalk compared to 2004, and we were all very lucky. But I'm really disappointed that we have people in this society that think it's okay to do that. And council, I hope you will agree with me that it's not appropriate for us to be picking up willfully cut-down trees at taxpayers' expense, when this was a willful violation of our ordinances. I will, to update you, I understand the gentleman has come in to pick up that tree, or pick up a permit. And after the fact, after cutting the tree down, he, I guess he was in today, did we charge him for the permit? Okay. And I would recommend that we keep the fee, that it not be waived, because this was not hurricane-related damage. There was nothing on that tree that was hurricane-related. And it was huge. I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you for the time.
All right. It's an unfortunate incident. You never know what some people will do in case of a storm, but Mr. Griffin, did you have code enforcement involved in that, or, yes, okay?
Yes, sir.
So they will handle it accordingly. Anyone else from the public wish to speak about cutting, unnecessarily cutting good trees or bad neighbor behavior? Yes, sir.
Ben Hocker, city of Sebastian. Why is this brought before the city council? It's a situation, a gentleman took a tree down illegally, which could have been notified to the city manager, who would have then resolved the problem. But we were here as the public to sit here for 15 minutes, listening to a personal problem between two parties. And nothing was accomplished. There was asking of the person who cut the tree down to show up at the next council meeting. And to me, it's a little abusive of using the council seat. We had an incident prior with abuse of a council seat. It's kind of upsetting. Simply turn the report in, let the city manager know he came for a permit, yeah, he's going to have to pay to pick up the debris. Most likely, somebody will be there tomorrow going down that particular road, not knowing of the situation, and pick up the debris. But I don't think it's appropriate to come to the city council under personal situations. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any council member can bring up anything they want and ask the city manager to put it on the agenda. So that's it. It's also, to me, kind of raises awareness about bad behavior that does go on out there. And the overwhelming people in Sebastian are good people, and, you know, it doesn't give you the right just to do what you want to do and when a storm happens or something along that nature.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
And, you know, it's not just, not just personal people that hap, that where that happens, there are companies that are doing work in here that are not putting out cones for their, for their work. There was trucks that obstructed Lake Drive, putting in a driveway over there, and I was coming back from the gym, and I said, and I stopped, and I was very nice, I said, you know, you really probably should have, because there was cars that were, there wasn't really much of a lane left open for two cars, and they had really much of a lane left open for, for two cars, and they had cement trucks there and they had everything there, but they didn't have any cones out. There was nobody out to, to route traffic around there. And, you know, I had to stop while a car came, came the other way, and so I stopped, I think it was this morning, and I said, you know, it'd be nice if you had some cones out there. And he said, and I said it in a nice way, he said, "Well, you got some, I'll put them out." I said, "Well, that's not my job." I said, "You should have some." "Oh, yeah, we'll get right on it, chief." I mean, that was the, you know, I didn't call the city manager, but it's not just, you know.
You know that driveway, the last council meeting? Frank Watanabe had to go to that driveway before it got dark and put cones out. They dumped a whole load of dirt in the road.
I know.
In the road.
So, I mean, is there anything that we can do for contractors that don't do right? I mean, can we say, you know what, you can't work here anymore? Or fine them or something? I don't know.
That'd be nice.
If I could, it's, but, real quick on that, there are, we have an ordinance that requires that anyone who parks in the road, a contractor who parks in the road, is required to have cones. So, that's already a law we have in the city of Sebastian. So, if we're having issues with that, then we should go ahead and start enforcing that.
That's landscapers?
The cones are small, they're, they're inexpensive. We already have that, an ordinance for that, and, you know, I agree that, that we need to go ahead and make sure that we start enforcing that because it does become a problem, and, and those trucks do take up a great deal of the road. And I'll just, I'll make one more point on, on having this item on the agenda. This council unanimously decided to put that item on the agenda, so this isn't an abuse of by any council member. This is an agenda item that we unanimously placed on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out. That's, that's correct. All right. Anyone else wanting to speak about that, this matter? All right. Brings us up to Ms. Ginsburg. Any matters?
Nothing tonight, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Griffin?
Just one more thing, sir. You were talking about the employees, and I just want to expand on that. We obviously have some great employees here, and I, I really observe some eye-watering dedication of our folks out there working in extreme heat, under adverse conditions. So, I know that they will appreciate council authorizing that bonus, but it really hasn't gone overlooked for me of the job that they're doing day in, day out. So, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Yeah?
Okay. Mr. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to add my thanks to, to our city manager and his staff, and also to Chief Morris and her staff for the tremendous job that they did taking the city through the hurricane and bringing us out on the other side. It was a wonderful job. City looks good. I'm especially pleased to see the, the staff that was out there clearing up the streets and getting us back to normal. I really appreciate it. Also, I wanted to just take this opportunity to let everyone know that as, as you may or may not know, I have not seeking reelection, so I'm, I'm taking this opportunity, being my last meeting, to say thank you to everyone that I've worked with here at the city, to our city manager, both past and present, city clerk, Mr. Ginsburg, all the staff that I've worked with, that have worked with me to help me learn the ins and outs of city government, to help me navigate all the complex policies, procedures, ordinances, resolutions, everything like that. I really appreciate it. I appreciate all the, the council members for allowing me to be up here with them and have a voice, to be heard. I, I thank the residents for giving me the opportunity to serve them, and I, I'm hoping that my time here, I was able to bring some value to the council and to the city. And last but not least, to thank my family, my wife Athena, my son Dominic. Sorry for all the, the late nights and the events missed because I was doing something related to council, but I felt it was necessary. It's been a real pleasure for me to, to serve the city. It's probably selfishly because I think I enjoyed it more. But it was a good experience. I really enjoyed it. And as, again, as I say, I hope I was able to bring some value to the city and to the council. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. (applause). Ms. Coy?
Yes, thank you. It was brought to our attention by Linda Kinschen, mentioned, I, I did not know until she brought it up that our special needs playground was coming down behind the police department. I think there's some talk going on through the recreation department and with Park, thank you, Parks and Recreation to replace that. However, in the meantime, there is a church who could use that equipment. They are in fact building a special needs playground at the United Church of Sebastian, and they're one of the Clambake recipients this year. The money they're asking for is the, just about enough from what I'm understanding that will pay for that mat, that special matting that goes on the, on the very bottom, which is not reusable. We cannot pull that up. It's, once you put it down, it's there for the duration. So, we can't be giving them that, but I am here to ask council, I spoke with the city manager, he has no objection. It's, there's some wear, quite a bit of wear on this material out there. So, if we built a new one, I think it would be in the city's best interest to buy new and not try to use the old material. But the church would be very happy to utilize this and re-powder coat it and paint it and, and refurbish it to use at their facility if council says okay.
Okay. Would that legally be okay and if it was open to the public, Ms. Ginsburg?
If you instruct me, I'll prepare an appropriate resolution for next time. What you'll do is declare the, or council will consider declaring the property to be, personal property to be surplus, and you could provide it to them in that resolution. If so, if I get the information, I'll be happy to prepare that resolution for you.
Very well. And so, that would be at, once our next meeting is November 16th. Okay. We don't, do we have to move that stuff before then? Does that have to come out of there? So, it can, we can wait? Perfect. And then the Clambake will be over by then too? Yes?
All right. Everybody's in agreement with that? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and indeed, I would just like to, I want to say thank you to 99.999% of Sebastian residents who were kind to each other, who respect the city's ordinances and respect their neighbors and have done everything in their power to get back to normal. I could not believe, I've been riding my bicycle lately a lot and going around the neighborhoods and seeing people out there the day after the hurricane and every day since Friday, putting stuff in piles and being patient and waving and saying hello. Not the middle finger wave, it's hi, is everybody okay? So, there is a big, a good side to this city, but I did want people to know that there is an ugly side, and there's a dangerous side too. I almost lost my car and maybe my life on Friday. Thank you.
All right. Nothing else? Mr. Hill?
Yeah, I'll just say that, of course, this is the last meeting before the election because our next meeting is canceled because of the early voting in the chambers. I appreciate the service from Councilmember Gilmore and Councilmember Adams. Thank you very much for the years you've put in. I will be on the ballot. Hopefully, I'll be back, but the election is going to be on the 8th of November. So, thank you guys very much for the service you've given this community, and thanks staff for all that you've done as well.
All right. Well, I concur. Well, thank you for your service and good luck, and we'll see what happens. And then, Mr. Griffin, I just want to confirm, I know Barbara has a lot of the slides on Channel 25 concerning irregular tree cutting and unscrupulous contractors are out there. I know she did a fantastic job during the storm with social media and getting new friends and informing the public, so she has all those slides. Right, Barbara, I see you back there. Very good. And then the other thing I'd just like to mention is this afternoon, Ms. Coy and I, we went to Sebastian River Middle School where they, they honored a teacher, the VFW, Mr. Jack Hodge, who has been instrumental in preparing a patriotism and Americanism program which has been adopted by the entire school district now, and they're actively going into schools and talking to them about, you know, service and patriotism and everything. And our own Sebastian volunteer Barney Giordan had recommended Mr. Jack Hodge for the Teacher of the Year Award, and it was a piece of cake. He won the local VFW Teacher of the Year, but then he won the district VFW Teacher of the Year, which that encompassed from Hope Sound all the way out to Sebring, and then he won the state VFW Teacher of the Year Award. And what they are recognizing him for today is his thing went all the way up nationally, and he was recognized as placing in the top 10% of teachers throughout. And I mean, the state of Florida had 6,000 teachers that were entered. I don't know how many were involved in nationally, but I mean, that covered the 50 states and Puerto Rico and the American territories and everything. And as Jack Willis had mentioned to us was, you know, the supreme commander of the VFW oversees 1.5 million members they have. So, it was just a true honor for Mr. Hodge and all he has done. I mean, he was instrumental in several years ago, Veterans Day, kids were going to school on that day, and he was one of the big people who started to push that on Veterans Day that it should be a holiday to recognize veterans across the board. And they also have, he also, you know, helps prepare, they have a breakfast November 7th, which is honoring veterans and their families at Sebastian River Middle School, and that's starting at 7:15 in the morning. So, if he can make it, that'd be great. So, that's all I have. Again, many thanks, Mr. Griffin, you and all your staff. I was beyond impressed and, and just, just fantastic. And you have developed that line, you know, like we mean you talk, if your face goes down in the salad, you have somebody that's going to rise up. And I mean, it was kind of funny, you know, going to the management meetings and they were talking about a succession plan, not just for Mr. Griffin, but for the police department and all the department heads. Hey, make sure that you have that number two who can step up in case for some unbeknownst reason they couldn't make it. So, again, I was just thoroughly, thoroughly impressed. Thank you. Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to echo the comments of Vice Mayor Adams, and this too will be my last meeting. I'd like to thank all the citizens of Sebastian for supporting me and for voting for me for four terms, and I'm honored by their trust and their trust in me, and I've always tried to keep the best interests of our city in mind during my tenure here, and so this will be my last meeting, and thanks for all your help. That's all.
All right. All right. Thank you. Just encourage everybody to get out there and vote November 8th, and we'll have our next scheduled meeting November 16th. Good night.